Evening, everybody. Welcome to our council meeting, November 28th, City of Mount Pearl. Welcome to everybody who's here today. Councilant Oll sends his regrets. I believe he is tending to a family function. A very positive thing has happened in their lives, the birth of a grandson. So, welcome again, and you see before you, council, the agenda. I'll accept a motion, please. Thank you, councillor Frye. And second by councillor Lane, all in favor of the agenda? And those opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. Off to a good start. We begin today's public council meeting by respectfully acknowledging the province of Newfoundland and Labrador as the ancestral homelands of many diverse populations of indigenous peoples, including the Beothic, who have contributed to 9,000 years of history on the island of Newfoundland. Today, this province is home to diverse populations of indigenous and other people. We acknowledge with respect the diverse histories and cultures of the Mi'kmaq, Inuit, and Inuit. We honor this beautiful land together as we strive for collective healing and true reconciliation. Minutes, council, for November 14th are before you, before we adopt those minutes. Can I have any commentary about errors or omissions, please? Seeing no hands up. Thank you very much. Councillor Locke has moved the minutes, and second by councillor Rice, all in favor? Contradicted, carried. Business arising, please, if anybody has any comments or questions. Please, councillor Locke.
Regarding item 589 there, the Olympic Drive construction. I just want to commend our staff for getting that done, and I did explain to several residents afterwards that the final course will be going on, and and they were appreciative of the explanation that because, again, initially, they thought we were paving a road, cutting it up, you know, tearing up, good work. But once I explained the process, and it's a normal process, and that we will have final course next construction season, they were delighted. So, again, thank you for the explanation last public meeting, and thanks for the prompt work up there on Olympic Drive. Thank you, Mayor.
Anybody else? Okay, hearing none, we'll move over to committee reports. We have the PEG Committee, Planning, Engineering, and Development Committee, and I think councillor Rice is beginning.
Take your worship. Yeah, number one on our planning on our PEG Committee is Maffet Road Phase 7. So, this is Newfoundland Power servicing. So, the background this one is the city is in receipt of a permit application from Newfoundland Power regarding servicing for Maffet Road Phase 7. This application contains near lat servicing for power supply to residential properties and full underground servicing for street lighting. Newfoundland Power indicated that this is the only option available to provide street lighting for this development for Maffet Road, the Phase 7. Going forward with the new developments, Newfoundland Power will no longer be servicing lots from the rear and will be servicing homes from the street. Recommendation from Planning, Engineering, Development Committee has received this application and recommends its approval, noting once again that this is the only option available as provided by Newfoundland Power to provide servicing to residents in this area. I so move.
Thank you. Move by councillor Rice, second by councillor Locke. Yeah, please go ahead, councillor. No, you might be saying the same thing I'm saying. Go ahead.
Thank you, CEO. Just a question here, because it came up a while back about underground servicing. I'm just, I'm just curious from, from either the city's perspective, from a planning, engineering perspective, or from Newfoundland Power's perspective. Going forward, is the preferred or planned option, because we have a lot of development forthcoming in Northland's area, is the, is the direction towards underground wiring? Is that the preferred option here? Or is the preference overhead wiring from either Newfoundland Power or from our, our perspective? I'm just wondering if I could get?
And I was gonna ask, is it an option? Yeah, no, that's my question too. Director Antle, please.
Thank you, councillor Locke. We've reviewed this on several occasions, and there, there is a couple of options. When Newfoundland Power talks about servicing, no longer servicing from the rear, they'll service from the front, and it'll be either an overhead or an underground. Their preference, as we understand, is that we would prefer to be underground. It's a, it's a better for many number of reasons, but particularly to do with windstorms and what have you, you know, the wires are not being damaged and blown down. Of course, we have streetlights, which means we have to have, you know, power into the poles on the curb side. They had difficulty, as you can probably imagine, when they have rear yard servicing. People have to get through rear yards and sometimes difficult snow conditions to do repairs. So, there's also an improvement if you can service from the front, from a street side. We've indicated that, and we've talked to our Public Works colleagues, and director Donald can speak to this if he, if he wishes, that there's a concern with underground utilities conflicting with our underground utilities, our water and sewer and servicing in the street. So, our, our preference would be to try to avoid those conflicts. So, we would prefer that the Newfoundland Power lines would be overhead. We keep our services underground. That's where we've done our review too. So, going forward, we have a decision and a recommendation to make and discussion amongst council. How you would prefer, if you would prefer this to be an underground or an overhead, and bear in mind, there's other utilities too, like particularly fiber op or other services that, you know, they may change in the future, which we understand they certainly will. Will they be wireless? And will it not be a wired provision? So, that's something to consider as we move forward. But right now, this particular subdivision is going to be serviced from the rear overhead, but it'll be underground to streetlights at the street side.
Follow-up from councillor Locke, and then over to councillor Frye.
Thank you, Director Antle, and I understand the, you know, potential conflict with our underground servicing. But I was sort of thinking beyond, like with our Northland's development and, and, you know, north of Black Marsh Road there, we got, you know, some, you know, some potential developments coming there. Early on in the developing, in the development stage, I'm sure we could, we could plan their engineering such a way that the underground electrical, you know, wiring would not compromise or interfere with our, I, I can understand the argument in existing, in existing neighborhoods, but I would think that we could, we could plan for that, you know? And then the only reason that this came to mind is driving here today in the, in the Tempest outside, and the announcement that the line was down in Paradise on Tops Road. So, given the, you know, the climate changes that we're seeing here, and the, you know, the increased frequency and intensity of such episodes outside today, I just think it'd be prudent if we went underground. But, you know, we got advanced planning for the newer parts of Mount Pearl that I would, I would suggest that maybe that's an option that we could certainly investigate. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, my, my question is, is just whether or not the residents are aware of this. Have they been, has there been any discussion with the residents?
Thanks, councillor Frye. There has not been specific discussion with residents. This is a new subdivision, and this is servicing of new lots, in many cases, some newer homes that are in that area. And what I understand is many of the residents are seeking streetlights soon. So, that's their biggest concern, to get, you know, lights in the, in the curb lines, right? So, we have not spoken specifically to individuals for any particular consultation as such.
No, I, I only ask because of the smallwood drive rear issue that we had there a few years ago, but if it's new lots, it's a relevant question. Thank you.
Good discussion. Like, my concern is what happens. So, Mount Pearl, especially Newtown, some parts of Powers Pond have a lot of underground wiring and could not get cable utility brought in because it was too expensive for some of the the internet cable companies to bring in. So, I, I think it's fair to ask, and are we pushing back that, you know, we, we insist there has to be full utilities for all of these houses? I guess we're discussing the how, but we're not going to end up in a situation where we have poles somewhere for cable and electricity underground for Newfoundland Power. Would there still be a partnership that's always existed between the, the two utilities?
Your worship, yes, that, that's generally the only way that you can manage utilities in, in any community is to have coordination with all of the various utility providers. So, generally, and I, I can't speak for all of those other utility providers, but generally, there's one company that will have poles. And then they lease services or share services with the other utilities that need to access those poles. And that's how it moves going forward. And, and to speak to councillor Locke's point about planning forward, yes, that's, that's what we'll do. And, you know, I, I don't know how far you wanted the discussion to go today. I just know from talking to my colleague in, in the director of Public Works, it's, we can manage conflict. It's, it's managing the risk of when you're doing, say, a, a water or sewer repair, you, you can't have power left on when you're digging underground and there's power on the ground. So, you have to have the power shut down to do that service safely. And that's the kind of things that Public Works has to deal with in that risk. So, sometimes the benefits of being underground, there's a risk that you're taking with it being underground too. So, it's better balancing all of that together. But as we move forward with Northland, North Tops Road, all of those things will be brought together.
So, may I suggest councillor Rice that we add another condition to this approval? That if the right word is cable provision, like, we don't want to end up in a situation where these new residents, who are not there yet, and they can't be consulted. We have a developer, we have one utility, but the condition I think we should be adding is that, you know, full internet and cable will be provided to these neighborhoods. It's not in the motion, so we're giving Newfoundland Power the approval to move ahead. Haven't quite worked out the details, but I really sincerely think a really important detail here is the ability of new residents, new housing construction to get, to get cable and that. So, I'm just wondering, you know, should we amend this motion? At least to make the point clear that this council has an expectation for these new developments. And I'm assuming, Director Antle, it's also a standard that's being applied across the province by Newfoundland Power. Yes?
I'd like to just clarify a couple of things. This particular motion, it's my understanding, this is for Maffet Road Phase 7. We're not talking about any other subdivision in the city. When we, just to clarify, the other subdivision developments recently in the city have all had, you know, streetlights at curbside, of course. They've all had rear yard servicing. That's the same thing here. The difference in this one is that it's a front underground servicing for streetlights, whereas in the past, it's been an overhead. That's the difference. So, it's, it's, it's improving in some respects, streetscape, because there's an underground service line for streetlights. The question will be, in future, as we move forward, how we deal with, you know, the preference for other utilities? I think that's maybe your question, is to make sure that that's dealt with moving forward, that it's clearer.
Right, and if this is the lead provider of the utility, how do we know that our residents, our future residents, will be ensured that they have access to cable? Obviously, they have to have access to Newfoundland, Newfoundland Power and electricity through some way. So, I'm just wondering, do we bring that secondary part back after approving this motion, or do we amend the motion, make it clear? And I'm assuming my colleagues support this, because if we don't act now, we could find this is going to come back to haunt the developer of this subdivision as well as our residents. I just want to hear your thoughts.
So, it, it was, it is my understanding that the other utility providers are going to use these poles. Right. So, it's, it's not really a question of how they'll put their services in. Their services will come from rear yard and overhead to those houses. And, you know, some, you know, and I want to clarify, there are, you know, several properties, houses built up there now. It's, it's, it's based upon the past servicing that we've used in Maffet Road and other recent subdivisions.
Yeah.
There's a, you know, there's mostly new houses and new lots now that are trying to, you know, be built there at the same time. So, it's, it's, if, if council wanted us to consult, well, we'd have to be consulting with, you know, a, a mix of, you know, limited amount of residents and some proposed future residents. And how do you, you know, really have a full?
Yeah, that's fair. But to councillor Locke's point, I think the issue is not with the motion, it's the going, this, this commentary. Going forward with new developments, Newfoundland Power will no longer be servicing lots from the rear. And seems to me the two utilities, I'll say two, but there's more than two, I'm not going to discuss any brand names. I think at the end of the day, that needs to come back to this table. So, perhaps the motion can stand, but I do believe, I'm looking at my colleagues, some of them are nodding, and they're all nodding, thank you. We just want to make sure that, you know, we don't get stuck with housing that's not fully serviced, right? So, that fair, council? Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, for Phase 7, and then going forward, we have a bigger issue, I think, or potentially to deal with. Okay, you happy with that? I'm happy if you are, sir.
Oh, yeah, no, we'll stick to the motion we got, and then if we need to, like, Director Antle will certainly, you know, correspond with the, with light and power and our other utility providers and, and get back to us on some information, I guess, on that, right?
Is this the final phase of Maffet Road? No, I think there's another little piece. So, we'll be dealing with this issue within the next 12 months, the way the housing market is, is moving right now. All right, councillor Rice has put a motion on the floor, second by councillor Locke. All in favor? Those opposed? Thank you for indulging me. Motion carried.
Before we start the next one, next item here, I'm gonna, I'm gonna recuse myself of this. This one is a potential conflict of interest, so I'll step out of the room while my colleagues discuss the next item. Thank you.
Okay. Councillor Rice.
Take your worship. So, number two is 20 Banister Street. This is a demolition order. So, I'll give you some background on this one. So, since April 2019, city inspectors have visited the property at 20 Banister on multiple occasions, following complaints regarding the dilapidated state of the dwelling on the property. Multiple notices and orders have been issued there to redeem the deficiencies, so a lot of deficiencies in this area, 20 Banister. On January 31st, 2023, a city inspector visited the property with an inspector from the Fire Prevention Division of the St. John's Regional Fire Department. Both the city inspector and the fire inspector recommended that the property be demolished due to, to the condition of the dwelling and the risk of fire damage to the property and surrounding services or structures. Recommendation from Planning, Engineering, Development Committee recommends that the council authorize the chief administrative officer to order, issue an order to the property owner at 20 Banister Street, Mount Pearl, to redeem the hazardous conditions of the property by the demolition and removal of the dwelling and all other structures on the property within 30 days of the order being served. And I so move.
Thank you. In this case, councillor Lane, I'll ask you to second the motion. There's only four of us remaining. Move by councillor Rice, thank you. Second by councillor Lane. Any comments? I'll call a question. All in favor? And those opposed? Thank you. Motion carried. Councillor Locke can return to the chamber when he's ready.
Okay, off we go. Number three. This one is for a building occupancy permit listing from November 6th to November 17, 2023. So, if you look there in your kit, you'll see not the name all off, but the residential part there from November 6th to November 17th, and our commercial development part there from same dates, November 6th to November 17th. So, the Planning, Engineering, Development Committee recommends the building permits issued for this period showing a total construction value of $3,465,800 be approved, and I so move.
Thank you. It is moved by councillor Rice. Thank you. Second by councillor Locke. You see before you. All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
And the second part of our occupancy permits is our listing there for our occupancy permits as well for this, and I so move this one as well.
Again, move by councillor Rice, second by councillor Locke. All in favor? And those opposed? Motion carried.
Next part is our capital projects update. So, we're nearing the, I guess, the final phases of our season now for winter and setting in. So, please note that all capital projects throughout the city are nearing completion for the 2023 construction season. The city wishes to thank all residents for their patience. And going forward, you know, we try to communicate the information to the residents in the area, and sometimes we, we miss that, and we apologize for that, but we try to correct it going forward. So, Birch Avenue upgrading, estimated completion date is the end of this month, November 29th, 2023. Feral Drive, Holden Street to Evans Place. Seasonal suspension of work happening at the end of November, which is, well, the 29th of November, to resume in 2024 construction season. And the asphalt and concrete maintenance hall repairs are ongoing or are near completion. And that's it for our committee report, your worship. Thank you.
Thank you. Housekeeping matter. You moved the commercial and the residential separately. I think there's a C30 for an occupancy permit that needs to be moved. Am I thinking it might have, might need to be done?
So, do both motions, motion to one?
Yeah, no, the C30 there, the building permits and occupancy permits. I don't think we captured that.
Okay, so, C30 is is the occupancy permit for 32 Blade Crescent to occupy. A nicer move.
Thank you. Again, move by councillor Rice, and second by councillor Locke. All in favor? And those opposed? Thank you for indulging me again. Housekeeping is done. Okay, so, next committee, well-delivered. Capital Projects look like we're very, very busy despite the transition in the weather. The Recreation and Community Safety Report, councillor Frye.
Thank you, your worship. On our agenda this evening, the first item is recreational facilities holiday hours. You know, it's only, what, three weeks, three, a little over three weeks to Christmas? And we'll budget, of course. The recreational facilities holidays hours of operations are listed here in the kit. Now, I'm not going to read them all out, but I will let people know that they are, they are modified, and of course, December 25th and 26th, they will be closed. And these hours of operation will be posted at each facility, but they're also going to be on our city's website. So, I encourage users of our facilities during the season between December the 24th and January the 1st to, to check the holiday hours because they are modified somewhat. And next on our agenda is the Glacier Arena, the holiday season final skate. So, for the information of the public, the final skate dates have been posted at the Glacier and on the city's website as follows. Sunday, December the 17th is a family skate. Monday, December the 18th is a general skate, and Friday, December 22nd is an adult and senior noon skate and parent and tot skate. And all public skates will resume on Tuesday, January 2nd, but I'm also gonna, to just throw this out here as well. On December the 31st, at the Glacier, between 3:00 and 5:00 p.m., we have a free skate night, and that's for first night celebrations. So, hopefully, we'll have lots of, lots of residents show up there. And now, I'm gonna pass it on to my colleague councillor Locke for the remainder of our report this evening.
Thank you, councillor Frye. Next item for us, Mayor, is the upcoming Breakfast with Santa, Sunday, December 17th. I've had several residents reach out over the past couple of weeks wondering when this event was taking place. The tickets sell out very quickly. So, we just want to let our residents and friends know that our annual breakfast with the big man himself is going to take place at the Reed Center from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. on Saturday, sorry, Sunday, December 17th. Tickets are $7 each and free for children under the age of two. They will go on sale through Evan Bright on Monday, December the 4th. So, a notice again to our residents and any visitors that would like to attend this breakfast. And this is, it's a sellout event. And, and for $7, you get a nice meal, and then it also includes a picture with, with Santa. So, I know, I, I know three young people that are super excited about seeing Saint Nicholas on, on this, this particular day. That's exactly it, yep. The three children right here. So, that's just information, Mayor. The next is a tender for washroom paper. The existing contract for the supply of washroom paper for all of our city-operated facilities will expire on December the 31st of 2023. The tender for this includes, included specifications designed to ensure that the city is receiving paper products that meet environmental certification from UL Echo Logo, that they are also EPA compliant, as well as 100% biodegradable. The city requested the dispensers as a part of this tender, and this will ensure consistency throughout all the buildings, so that we're not buying supplies from different suppliers for different buildings throughout the city. So, this will provide consistency. The tender called for a three-year contract with the potential for a two-year extension closed on the 11th of October of 2023, and we received nine bids. Quotes were received for the annual supply of washroom paper supplies plus 160 universal washroom paper dispensers, including taxes and delivery. And the buildings included in this particular tender are the Mount Pearl Summit Center, the Mount Pearl Glacier, City Hall, and our municipal depot. So, our committee is recommending approval to award this contract to Bill Rock, Rockwater Professional Products, at the lowest estimated annual cost, $36,330.80 plus $7,586.55 for the dispensers, and I so move.
It is moved by councillor Locke, thank you as well. Second by councillor Frye, thank you. What is a universal washroom paper dispenser?
I would suggest it's one that products would, would fit from a variety of, of sources. It's like plugs are universal, you know, that, that's what they're trying to do with all these iPhones now, to try to make them universal. I know there's a move afoot in the EU for producers to make sure that these plugs are universally designed. So, I'm assuming that these dispensers will accommodate supplies from from various sources.
Well, good answer. I'm thinking too, along the same lines, that Director Collins, if you have one universal dispenser, I think the thing here, councillor Locke, is that it's, it's common to all of our facilities.
Right.
Then, the paper you buy, you'll buy in higher volume because it fits them all at the end of the day. I had no idea we had 160 dispensers. Director?
That is correct. The universal, excuse me, will accept different brands. And this is unit pricing, so it's based on estimates, but this would be right in line with our actuals projected for this year. So, I figured I'd mention that as well.
Anybody else got any other questions? Hearing none. I'll call the question. All in favor? And those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
The fifth item for us has to do with some upgrades to our Canada Games baseball facility at Team Guju. These upgrades were originally funded from the city's gas tax allocation. And you see them in this there for $23,073.97. But since, since this time, the city has been approved for federal funding for that particular project. So, the rationale for withdrawing the gas tax funding is to utilize unspent ACOA funding. And this will allow the city then to reserve our, our gas tax monies, and we can spend these on other priorities and other, other projects. The new approved ACOA funding includes, like I said, the upgrades to Team Guju, our, our baseball facility down there, and it also will include upgrades, much anticipated upgrades to our Brands Combs Pond and Powers Pond trails. So, our Department of Recreation and Community Service, sorry, and Community Safety recommends that the gas tax-approved funding of $475,298 be reversed and returned to the city's gas tax allocation. The committee supports this, and I so move.
Thank you. Move by councillor Locke, second by councillor Frye. Yes, please, councillor Frye.
I don't think that I should second this motion, not that I don't agree with it, but because I may be in potential conflict from working at ACOA. So, if somebody else could, I'd really appreciate that.
Just a thought. Would you care to leave the room if you declare me in conflict of interest? I think if you declare a conflict or otherwise, I think you should. I think that's the protocol. otherwise, I think you should, I think that's the protocol. It sounds a bit heavy-handed, but I think that's what councillor Locke did a few minutes ago, right? Yeah.
Well, the motion itself is to, to reverse the gas tax, right? So that's why I didn't declare conflict in advance, but after, after some consideration, perhaps I should. And I think I'd prefer to leave the room just to be.
This is not an ACOA-related transaction, in fairness to you.
Right.
But I always, I think we always feel it's up to members of council to declare that. But if you are declaring a conflict, it's probably the wisest thing to do is to remove yourself if you are.
Better be safe. I'll do that.
No worries. All right. So now we're down to four again. So we had a motion from councillor Locke. We have a secondary in councillor Rice, thank you very much. And he, like, this is a reversal, so we don't lose the money. You spoke to it very well. All in favour? Those opposed? Motion carried. All right, welcome back. We're going to move now to the corporate services and public works report. Councillor Lane, please.
Thank you, your worship. I'm going to take the first two and then I'll hand it over to my colleague councillor Rice. The first one is invoices for approval. And council, you can see them there in your kit. Just to highlight a couple. We have the City of St John's Robin Hood Bay tipping fees for September, which is fifty four thousand dollars, five hundred and sixty and twenty seven cents. And we also have the city's share of the St John's Regional Fire Department for November two thousand and twenty three, which is four hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred and eighty three dollars and thirty three cents. Let's just highlight a couple of those fees. And ISO move.
It is moved by councillor Lane, thank you, and second by councillor Rice. Any questions, comments for councillor Lane? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favour? Contraminded and carried. Back to you.
Yeah, the second item is our payment register. For the information of council, the following payment register for November ninth to the twenty second, two thousand and twenty three totaled four hundred and sixty nine thousand, four hundred and sixty three dollars and fourteen cents. And that's just for information, so you can see it there in your kits. And I'm going to pass it over to my colleague councillor Rice.
Thank you councillor Lane. So our next item on corporate service and IPW is our remote meeting attendance policy. Regarding, this is for council. So the background, this one is in line with section three dash five of the City of Mount Pearl Act. The city requires a policy regarding remote meeting attendance for members of council. Section thirty one, five of the City of Mount Pearl Act has been amended to authorize council to allow a councillor to participate in a meeting by electronic means, where electronic means enables the councillor to listen to the proceedings and to be heard, which is section, section thirty one also has been amended amended so that the councillor participating by electronic means is considered to be in attendance at that, at that meeting. Furthermore, the discretion to remotely attend by electronic means applies to committee meetings, a committee of the whole meetings and regular public meetings of council, but does not include special or privileged meetings of council. This now means that councils may permit councillors, council may permit councillors participate in council meetings remotely rather than in person. The committee reviewed best practices and the department recommends that the draft remote meeting attendance council policy be approved and implemented. The department recommends, recommendation was supported by the Corporate Services and Public Works Committee at their meeting of October thirty first, twenty twenty three, and by the Committee of the Whole at their meeting of November fourteenth, twenty twenty three. So recommendation from the Corporate Service and Public Works Committee recommends that the remote meeting attendance policy for council as attached be approved by council and implemented as soon as possible and ISO move.
It is moved by councillor Rice, second by councillor Lane. I guess this is just bringing us up to where we are and where we've been post-COVID. Any questions? Councillor Locke?
Just a point as I was reviewing this, mayor. It certainly, and correct me if I'm wrong, it doesn't include a circumstance that we ran into with COVID. You know, where, you know, all of council had to meet via Zoom and that, you know, decisions were made via Zoom. They weren't, they weren't made in person. So, yes, and I, I support, I support this particular, you know, policy that we're bringing forth here. But I'm just wondering, should we have some, some section in it or under extenuating circumstances? Or does, does, does council then have the authority at that time to override the policy? Or do we need to write it into, into the, into the policy now? Just a question that came up as I was reviewing it.
I think I'd ask the C A O that because you're talking about circumstances where all of us may have to participate remotely. I would think under the category of a member of council that would apply to all, but I rely on the C A O's best advice.
I do think we're covered under this policy that if a councillor can attend, then all council can attend virtually. If you use your discretion to do that.
And I think during COVID, municipal fairs issued a letters or emails to every municipality, providing for that in such unusual circumstances. But I guess when we look back now, we're just trying to put a policy in place that we can manage the occurrence of remote participation. So any other questions? Hearing none? I'll call the question. All in favour? Contraminded and that's carried. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship. And this part is for information purposes only. Public works status report. The committee reviewed the following status report. Roads under the road section, winter shift commenced on November thirteenth, twenty twenty three. Road supervisor's schedule is twenty four seven until April, twenty twenty four. Work continues on our manholes, our catch bases and our curbs. Street sweeping is ongoing and director Dallamant made a good point there. As soon as we start using salt, this is taking off the road pretty quick because we want to crawl on that piece of equipment as long as we can. Asphalt repairs now are coming to an end right now because we're, plants are closing down. I think one closed down last Friday, director Dallamant. And so we're, we got some other places that we get asphalt from if we need to. Household recycling and bulk garbage is ongoing. Land markings are being installed for an upcoming winter season. Work continues on our outdoor rinks, which is always a great attraction for our city. The salt shed is full. It was until our, I guess, until our last couple of icy conditions. So we've been using some salt from the shed there. And in our parks, our work continues on the Team Guju baseball field. Work is ongoing on our tree lighting at Saint David's. We're looking forward to that on this Saturday coming up. Work is being carried out on our city's Christmas parade float and we're all looking forward to that float in our parade this Saturday coming and our fleet. The service and maintenance is ongoing as always. Our snow clearing, clearing equipment is ready for twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four winter season. And I want to say thank you for IPW staff for getting all that ready. And our U T M division had two major repairs, two water main breaks in the week of November the thirteenth to the seventeenth, twenty twenty three. So one was located at Park Avenue. And the other one was in Donovan's. General calls we have, so, and those two repairs have been done and completed. Staff worked, I think, twenty four hours on one shift there to get it done for the next day. Our general calls are plug sewers, our service locates, our new water and sewer service inspections, our camera inspections, some troubleshooting, our leak detection, our catch basin cleaning and a storm sewer jetting, our water storms repairs and lift station inspections and maintenance is always ongoing. And also I want to just note the chart. There are Babyls, Big Pan as of November fourteenth. We have great numbers again showing for twenty twenty three, which is in November and levels are at thirty five feet, which is higher than the last two years of twenty twenty two and twenty twenty one, and especially, I guess, back in two thousand and nine. So there's three numbers there. And that's it for our committee report, your worship. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Speaking of numbers, I'm hearing twenty to twenty five. I'd like a motion from council to cancel tomorrow's storm. Director Dallamant, by this account, we're all ready. How are the crews feeling?
Yeah, so the latest on the storm is, we're, we're still, there's still numbers back and forth for higher elevations in this area. Some are suggesting that we may see up to thirty centimeters of snow starting tomorrow afternoon into tomorrow night. Our equipment is ready. We're ready to roll. Our staff are ready and eager to jump at the opportunity. And it seems we are definitely going to get something tomorrow evening.
Glad to hear, you know, we'd like to get the word out too to our residents. I think this is sort of towards director Collins. We have a, a policy where on December first, the winter parking ban goes in effect until I believe the end of March or thereabouts. However, the snow clearing regulations, just to advise everybody, like within twenty four hours after the end of a significant snowfall, folks are not, we're asking folks not to park on the road. So I guess our municipal enforcement may be out trying to help our snow clearing, clearing crews clean everything up. But director, I'm right, even though that ban comes in December first, that will apply perhaps to Thursday and perhaps Friday after the snowfall.
That's correct. It is twenty four hours after a significant.
Good stuff. The whole idea is keep everybody safe. Let's do a quick round table. Thank you, everybody. Councillor Rice, please.
Thank you, your worship. I have a few items here, actually, three or four. They won't be very quick. So our first one I have here is our, we had the pleasure of actually meeting with the Rotary Club, Waterford Valley, here in Mount Pearl. Some members of council attended that, and I want to say thank you to Jeremy Schwartz and Brandon Mullins that put together the presentation for our fine city plan and talking about the health of the Waterford River and I guess the commitment with the City of Mount Pearl and the Rotary Club. And they were really impressed, I guess, with the presentation and our, I guess, our conversation around the table. So I want to say that was really well attended and it was, thank you for the invite to the Rotary Club. Our second one is our, I want to talk about the Lions Club that had the food drive this past weekend on November the twenty fifth. I just want to say a big thank you to the City of Mount Pearl staff and director Dallamant and Corey Harvey for providing, I guess, the, I know council vote give the trucks and ring to the, to collect the food. But it was a bit, it was much appreciated by the Lions Club. So Gerald Crums, I, I spoke to Gerald on Saturday and, and he said how pleased he was with the support from the city. And I told him I would pass that along to everybody. Also, the, the the scouts were in attendance at that as well. So I just want to say thank you for the scouts that attended there as well. And two other things I have, the Lions Club Centre Class Parade, the sixty eight annual parade is this Saturday, starting at ten A M from Mount Pearl Senior High and coming down Ruth Avenue and finishing up in Mount Pearl Square. So we're all looking forward to that. And the tree lighting, All Is Bright is, will be happening at, on December the third. And I said December the third at six P M as well. It says third here on this one, but it's the second, isn't it? Yeah, it says December the third on our website there. So December the second at six P M and we're all looking forward to the tree lighting there at Saint David's Park. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Lane?
Thank you very much. Just a couple for me. So the first one, I want to say a big congratulations to Mount Pearl's own Zach Dean on scoring his first pro goal with the A H L Springdale Thunderbirds. So huge congratulations to Zach. The second one is, you know, as we are about to get in full swing into the holiday season, I just wanted to remind residents that, I know like myself, my children are very fortunate. They have lots of friends and loved ones who get lots of gifts for birthdays and Christmases and Easters and stuff like that. And you want, a lot of it goes unopened because you get doubles or triples or, you know, the child loses interest before they open it. So I always take this time of year as a good opportunity to donate unopened toys to local charities so that children who are in need can avail of those. So, I mean, it's just a thought, you know, it's the time of year for giving and, you know, I'm sure there's many people who are in positions such as myself who have children who have way too much. And it's important to give back to those that don't have. So just a reminder to residents that if you have anything to donate, then many of the local charities and churches will gladly take those donations off your hands. That's it for me. Thank you.
No, well said. And I know society, St Vincent de Paul, as well as the Salvation Army will gladly take any toy donation and, and drop it off to families in need, right? So it's all about caring for others with the Christmas spirit. Councillor Fry, it's back over to you.
Thank you. I too want to give a shout out to the Lions Club for their food drive. And, you know, a lot of people are, are raising money and funds for, for things like the Food Bank. And it's important to know that there, there's such a demand out there this year, more so than any other year. And for anybody who is, who is fundraising for the Food Bank, don't think, oh, I've already given, you know, if you can give more, give more because there's, the need is out there. And the one thing that people enjoy over Christmas is, is a good meal, good food. So I strongly encourage anybody to donate to the Food Bank. And also just a shout out to all of the community groups. I mean, the Lions Club do such wonderful work. The Mel Pearl Canettes Club, I mean, they have a turkey drive coming up now on the ninth of December to try and help with the Christmas hampers. And, you know, it's, it's the volunteers that are out trying to raise funds and items to help make our society better. And that's just a wonderful thing. We're lucky for that. And finally, for me, your worship, I just want to, on behalf of, I'm sure I can say this on behalf of all of our colleagues, just to send out good wishes to our colleagues in the town of Paradise. Their councillor, Elizabeth Laurie, is going through some difficult times. And she's made it public on her Facebook that her cancer has now encompassed both lungs and she's in hospital. So I know it's a difficult time for them and I just want to send out good thoughts and love to our colleagues in the town of Paradise and especially to councillor Elizabeth Laurie. Thank you.
Well said, yeah, we're thinking about you councillor Laurie, Laurie for sure. Over to you councillor Locke.
Thank you, mayor. A couple of items for me as well. Well, let's say a few perhaps. I know councillor Lane, in her committee report, mentioned the tipping fees at Robin Hood Bay. And I had an interesting conversation with a, with a senior from Mount Pearl last week, and I was kind of impressed that, that she had this, this environmental drive and desire. And, you know, the, the going joke you sometimes see on, on Facebook when they talk about the different security cameras around the world and the high tech, and then they show Newfoundland and it's a, a bunch of people looking out the windows, you know? And this lady said seniors are the greatest form of, of security because they're, you know, they're home and they're watching. But one thing she noticed was that she feels the amount of recycling on her street and in her neighborhood is declining, that people are putting out less recycling. So she asked me if I could bring it up here and I committed I would and, and I'll, you know, direct it to director Dallamant. I don't expect the numbers off the top of your head because, you know, this is a request that she asked in terms of our diversion rate. And, you know, is it, is it, has it stabilized? Is it decreasing? Anecdotally, she feels that people are not being as environmentally conscious. And it's, it's disturbing to her. And I know that we, we did bring in a recycling campaign, I don't know how many years back now, mayor, but and we brought in the clear, the clear plastic bags and we even did a, a garbage audit of, I think we took several hundred bags of garbage up to the depot, we cut them opened just to assess what was in the garbage stream going down to Robin Hood Bay. And the one thing that always sticks out to me, I think, was four percent that were textiles, like clothing that people were, were throwing out. And a third of our garbage was organics, was biodegradable. So when you figure, figure what are some total of tipping fees over the course of a year, one third of that, we could divert if we had an organics management plan in place or, or composting. But she, this resident asked if we could, if I could get the numbers for her and just, just to see. But because I know we're paying eighty nine dollars a ton for tipping fee now down at, at Robin Hood Bay. Her, her next point was, and she also knows about all the grass clippings, which tied in with her discussion of organics. But she said, like, our neighboring municipality, according to some of her family and friends, they have to put their yard waste out in paper bags. But we put ours in plastic bags. Now, if they're in paper bags and they go to Robin Hood Bay, the tipping fee is zero dollars. It's free. But we're paying eighty nine dollars a ton for all the yard waste that we're wrapping in plastics. So from an environmental perspective, all the plastic bags that we're dumping into Robin So from an environmental perspective, all the plastic bags that we're dumping into Robin Hood Bay, but also from an economic perspective of the money that we'd be saving if we could incorporate a paper bag, you know, uh, yard waste program. And I know it's a big ass because it's like you're going to require some kind of, you know, new equipment or new routes or what have you. So I just wanted to, um, to bring that forth. And I'll ask Mayor, uh, my request is if that can go back to committee? And maybe, you know, have a look at it. I'm not expecting the director to, to have all these data now on top of mind because there's quite a bit there. But I, I, I know we were very proud of the progress we were making with our recycling program, with our plastic bags and our garbage audits. And then we sort of, you, you know, we, we sort of left it as is. We didn't, we didn't advance it. So that's my request. If I could ask that to go back to our committee and then, uh, ask for a report, probably, you know, in the new year, perhaps. It's not, it's not urgent, but I'd certainly request that. Um, the other, the other thing, uh, just want to touch on is the Rotary uh, club of the, uh, Waterford Valley. Uh, I know Councilor Rice spoke to it, but, and Mayor, you did a great job, by the way, of, uh, of presenting. I thought it was very well presented. But what struck me afterwards in speaking with the Rotarians, and some of them were actually brought to tears. They were so moved by the focus that the city, the city is putting on, on the gem of our city, of our Waterford River. And one gentleman there said, he joined the Rotarians 40 years ago and this was their vision for the river. And, and, and he said, you know, with tears he's, he said, this is a dream come true. This is our dream come true. So they were so supportive over what the city is doing. So I want to commend staff for all the coordinating and, and stuff like that. And it was wonderful feedback that we're heading in the right direction according to these Rotarians. And they, they are so passionate about protecting our river and, and making sure that, uh, the environment is, uh, is maintained down there. And the last thing, I know Councilor Frye mentioned the food banks. I don't know if it was actually, if it was actually aired in our public meetings, but about the food banks and the fundraisers, but, uh, and I apologize, I wasn't able to get to some of the events the weekend because I was, uh, had another COVID booster, and my council, council colleagues will know, and it always wipes me out for three to five days. So I was inactive from Thursday till, till Monday, basically. But, uh, I mean, there was two announcements last week, donations, actually. You know, the Hockey With Hurt, all the, all the members of the Mount Pearl Modern Hockey Association, they raised, I think it was over $15,000. $15,000 to go to our local food banks. And then I think, Mayor, you mentioned there was three of our, uh, employees took it upon themselves, which I think is, is quite commendable during our haunted ha, hike around Powers Pond, to put a bucket out for donations. And I think they served, they, 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 over $12,000. So $27,000, you know, over the last two weeks were donated to, to the charities. And I just think, you know, in this day and age of everything is negative on the news and you're hearing about all these crises and wars, I think we need to celebrate the generosity. And I'm so touched by the, the youth and I commend the, uh, this, the coaches and the managers and the executive and all the parent volunteers of Mount Pearl Modern Hockey for setting such an example for our youth that it's important that you think outside yourself because that's what built Mount Pearl. We thought outside of ourselves to Councilor Lane's point about if you got extra toys, there are people that are less fortunate there. So I just, I, I know I'm going on here, but I, I think it needs to be celebrated that the good work that all of our service groups do and our youth do in the city of Mount Pearl. But I, I want to underscore what Councilor Frye said again. The $27,000 is fantastic, but the need is great. So let's not forget our fellow, our fellow neighbors during, uh, this festive season for many of us. Let's, let's spread some cheer to all families in our, in our community in our province. I thank you, Mayor.
No, no, thank you. Very well said. I, I'm going to finish the round table. I guess I'm the last one. I just wanted to talk about something that's on the go in the community. And I want to start off by saying, uh, safety.